All right, it is 6 o'clock and I am going to call the meeting to order and let you know, those that are visiting, the meeting is being recorded and for everyone in the room. First, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I see that we do have some visitors. Would any of you like to speak? Okay, so now we're going to go over the, review the notes from November 13th.
One second, sorry.
Sure, no problem.
Could I make a request that the minutes, I don't know if this is a pain in the butt request, but the minutes come sooner than like more, I don't want to say like immediately after the meeting, but within like a week or so after the meeting because I felt like so lost not being here. I didn't know what happened and like going to watch it. It's like watching the whole thing can be kind of just, you know what I mean?
The video didn't actually...
Make it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, so like I told you, I felt lost.
Yeah.
I would like, if that's a possibility to have it sent out a little bit sooner than the next meeting, then I can kind of, then I know if I need to have anything added.
I could've. I was waiting for the recording. I didn't find out until weeks later.
Oh, okay.
I didn't record. Usually I wait for that to begin and then, because I summarize then I go back and then.
Back watch, okay.
So when I did find out, that's when I did the minutes, so I apologize for that.
That's, no, it's okay. I just... I just felt lost, so you know, I'm like, oh, I missed a meeting. I feel like I missed.
It was kind of a perfect storm of things, yeah.
I think sometimes stuff is posted in the drive ahead of time.
It is. Sometimes, I know, sometimes it is. I do get like notifications on it, but I do feel like the minutes usually take a minute.
Okay. Lori, you had some...
Yeah, so I apologize because I just already... But I did want to make a couple of notes. I'd actually like it if we could hold on forty minutes tonight and approving them especially because Ms. Townsend was not here for a town hall meeting. There's no recording of the meeting. Jessica was here.
I was here.
Right, so I think it would be all of us to take some time and be thoughtful of what is missing. There's a significant discussion that's not included in the minutes and it was an important discussion. It involved diversity, equity, belonging, inclusion, creating a group focus on that. Why that was necessary, incidents of hate speech at AGS, creating a more tolerant culture, work that had been happening in terms of cultural inclusion. So I think that I'm disappointed that, you know, we don't have a recording in the interest of transparency, not provisions of certainly hot topic topics. I would think we need to be careful having a public rapport of that discussion. So I'm not prepared to give edits, but I did look at my notes from the meeting. I do have some things I can send to you if that is helpful to add. I don't know what our protocol is in terms of edits.
Generally speaking, the minutes are presented in draft form and then the committee can make changes to those minutes. And generally speaking, the minutes are presented in summary form. They're not meant to be a dialogue or a transcript, but a general summary. So again, I understand the need to carefully review them and then present, but I would recommend presenting in open session what your recommended edits are.
Okay, so I think when we look at the agenda, even the agenda from last month's meeting where we talked about those things, there's no representation in the minutes. And Sue, that's no reflection on their due diligence. Like it's a difficult situation to synopse with those review of the meeting. So I'd like to make a motion that we bring edits back to next month's meeting to put it in open session and vote on it. I'll second that motion.
Okay, any discussion?
So we're editing, we're coming back with what, not me, I wasn't here and there's no video, but we're coming back with what we're changing or?
What we're adding. There's, I don't feel like there's anything substantial that needs to be changed. There's just additions that are missing.
Okay, do you think we should all talk about what's missing and then just vote to add that into it? And then we'll have a clean one for next time so that we can vote on that one being clean? Like do you have like a, like a short, like this is what was talked about? Like I know, obviously I wasn't here, but just then we can be done voting the minutes and, you know what I mean?
So I'd ask my other members of the board that were present for that discussion, do you feel like you can give updates at this meeting prepared for that?
I am not prepared, no.
So the motion on the floor though is to amend the next time and that's what the vote would have to be basically?
But should we, should we vote to talk about that maybe?
I think, I think we're having discussion.
Yeah, no, we are having discussion, yeah.
But come with edits and vote to approve after edits have been motioned.
Well, we can... But if we're all coming back with edits, it's gonna be...
No, because we can add the edits and then say approve the amended minutes.
Right.
Okay, because this was kind of an unusual situation where the meeting wasn't recorded and, you know.
And it was, there was a lot discussed. I mean, we created a work that should be documented.
Right. Okay, any other requests there?
No, I just, I'm just trying to be done with it, but not because I don't think it's important, but you know.
I respect, I respect the vision, I do. I just, you know, again, in the interest of transparency, I would agree.
Okay, okay. All right, we'll do a vote then. Katie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Lauren, yes. All right, the next agenda item is hybrid meetings and change of school committee location and possible vote. So where this comes from is I was asked if we could do hybrid meetings. So I looked into it and we wouldn't be, we don't have the technology here to do that. So then I found out that we'd have to move to Town Hall to do that, which they do have the technology, but not necessarily someone who could help administer the technology, which I think, anyway, so I didn't think that, this is just my thought process. I didn't think it was the greatest thing, but I did find out that something we can do is we can broadcast live to YouTube while the meeting's in session. So, and I think the idea is people want to be able to see it basically while it's going on. Because even if you have hybrid, it's really, it's like having an audience here where they can't necessarily participate, but they're watching the meeting. So I don't know, and I talked to Area 58 today and they said that they can broadcast to YouTube at the same time, but they would have to have access to good Wi-Fi, which I said, this school has great Wi-Fi. Is that something that could be shared with Area 58 or?
That's what they had to do forever to get on the Wi-Fi.
Okay.
I can discuss that with our technology director.
Okay, is that, I mean, I don't, I, the reason, like I said, it was on, I put it on as an agenda item to discuss in case we needed to vote. I don't, if there wants to be additional discussion, I don't know if we need to have a motion first, but I didn't, after talking to Town Hall, I don't think it makes sense to move over there. I don't think there would be any benefit to that. And we always have this room available and people know where it is. Anyway, but I thought that would be a good solution to make school committee meetings more accessible to the public. So is that something we'd need to have a vote to broadcast it or?
I think you would probably want him...
Just to make sure?
Yes, to make sure that everyone's in agreement and you could make a contingent upon me confirming the feasibility with the technology director.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
And this is more for Jill. So in Silver Lake and in Kingston, how are meetings recorded?
In Silver Lake, meetings are sometimes recorded if the local cable company is able to come and record them. In Kingston, we have to go to the Town Hall to have our meetings recorded live, but it's a Kingston bylaw and the town provides staffing from the cable company to oversee the taping and making sure that we're constantly getting up and moving to a mic if we need to because when people speak in the audience, there's no microphone. So all speakers have to go up to a podium. So that's how it's done in Kingston.
And in Plimpton, they have a different?
In Plimpton, we have an Owl camera, which was purchased using grant funding and we have that at every meeting and we record. In addition, sometimes the local cable company comes and records as well.
So Kingston's the only one that goes live right now?
Yes.
Okay.
So I think, I think keeping the meetings here makes sense. My concern is we, especially post pandemic, I think people are just accustomed to having things readily accessible through a screen. And, you know, because we've never done it before, shouldn't it be a reason that we don't do it now? Or try to be creative in how we make recordings accessible to avoid things that happened like last month? So I would vote to support what you're suggesting in having the live meeting. If that's live on YouTube, there'll be a recording of it, correct? So in my opinion, that's the safest way to allow instant access for the community as well as a recording. And again, I know it's a courtesy and it's not required by law that we record meetings, but I think people have become accustomed to that courtesy. We should do everything we can to learn the digital age for it.
If someone wants to make a motion then?
Can I ask a question first?
Sure.
If it's on YouTube live, are people who are watching able to comment? So they can...
But not part of the meeting?
No, they might be able to comment on the video, but like you can comment on any video but like we wouldn't have access to the comments.
So it's not like Facebook Live when people can ask questions like virtually, somebody wants to?
We wouldn't have the technology to be able to monitor that and...
Have a meeting?
Have a meeting.
Okay, so even if they could, it doesn't matter?
Well, again, if you recall, when we were online for our meetings, we had to reestablish norms and expectations of how that chat feature was used. People were using the chat no differently than if people were standing up and shouting in a meeting. It's really no different, but people felt that because it was a chat feature, they could just comment during the middle of a meeting, not realizing that they need to be recognized by the chair.
That was my concern is that it could end up being a meeting within a meeting with people from the community are chatting with one another in a comment section as the meeting is happening. Because it would be, just as you described, them shouting while we're discussing, even though they haven't been recognized.
We won't be able to see it though.
I think you can set an expectation, sorry, I'm just jumping in. You can set an expectation of the meeting, the beginning of the meeting periodically throughout to say, if you were watching this live, please remember, any comments that you make are not legal to this body at this time. You know, I think anything new is going to have times where there's an adjustment and people will figure it out eventually, but you know, I think it's worth the best I can do.
Okay.
I'm sorry, that's, does that...
No, I mean, it was just a question. It doesn't change my opinion. I just wanted to ask.
Could we ask Area 58 to make it so that there's no comments available on the video when it's posted? I mean, how much can we ask of them to do?
I don't know how YouTube works, like.
I think you can do that.
I don't really know. I mean, I couldn't...
I don't mind comments, it's just like, it's the live comments.
Well, even, I don't mind if people make comments.
Yeah, but like, right, you can comment, but we can't see it. Answer it later maybe if it's an actual concern at another meeting, but it's not.
Not really. I don't think the whole world needs to be able to make comments on our little town's school committee meeting. I mean, I think it just has to be a comment.
Aren't they on YouTube anyway? So people can make comments anyway.
Yes.
I mean, they do end up on YouTube, so I don't think that's something we can prevent. Plus there's always Facebook if you want to make comments.
So what do we need a motion for? To look into?
To have, yeah, to broadcasting live and having Jill check with the technologies team that we can use the Wi-Fi for that.
Okay, I'll make a motion to allow us to broadcast live and have Jill look into the technology. That's a lot.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Can I just add one last comment? I think if the answer comes back that we can't support that through our technology person, the discussion is worth continuing on how we ensure access to the video.
Okay, so it can be a future, I mean, we'll have to review it anyway next time, but definitely, okay. All right, and now the water issue is on here twice under, it's here and under Principal Bowdre. So would we need to move it or?
Nope, I think Karen placed it there in case she didn't know which section you wanted to have it in. So however, whenever you'd like to handle it.
I think that we can just handle it under Principal Bowdre's report so that...
Okay.
For consistency, I guess. All right, food rewards and classrooms. Do you want to speak to that?
Sure. I just thought it would be a worthy discussion to think about whether or not food, especially candy, could be given as an award in the classroom setting. And I think that it makes it easier for everybody if it's just a policy. But other, like I didn't have a conversation with Mr. Bowdre about this, like, you know, do teachers give out candies rewards? I figured just kind of bypass that, just bring it here and then it's easy. And it's not like, oh, pointing fingers, you did this and this teacher does this instead. I personally, I am personally, for the best interest of children, is that food in general should never be used as a reward and especially not candy. So I would like to see a policy that says that there is just no food or candy ever given by a teacher to a child at all in any classroom, under any circumstances. So that's my thoughts and that's really both professional and personal judgment that I'm sharing and wondering how the rest of the committee feels about creating policy around that idea.
Isn't there already like you can't have food in the school because of allergies and such?
Yes, like children can't bring food in and you can't bring cupcakes for a birthday party, like, you know, things like that. But teachers can give candy or food as rewards for like a game or like, I don't know, like, I don't even know what it was for, but I know that it happens and it's, and I'm not criticizing the fact that it's happening, but I think it's in the children's best interest to not have that happen. And I think the easiest way to make it uniform across the board without pointing fingers is just to say that there's a new policy that says nobody can give out candy or food to children.
It does say in our wellness policy that any food or beverage should not be offered as a reward.
ADF. Policy ADF exists.
I did look through, I did miss that, so. So it's already a policy basically, okay.
But Karen, are you suggesting that not just for rewards, but in general?
Just in general, right, like, so maybe it says as rewards, but yeah, just in general, like not even...
Can I ask a question? I support the intention of what you're saying. I, as a baker, who had two kids go through the school and my youngest and my oldest one was upset that I couldn't make cupcakes, but we adapted and brought in apples and decorations. Anyhow, I think that's a good idea. My question is, if there's a lot of like homegrown type events, like, you know, the sixth grade ice cream social...
Pumpkin bread.
Right, there's a lot of other things that involve food here. So I think, I don't know if no, but I just think we have to be mindful about that link.
That's a good point, yeah.
Because I think those are important cultural, community events. And if we have a policy in place, it sounds like it just needs to be reminded or... I'd also love to hear a teacher feedback on what alternatives for reward systems they could use because, you know, and you're a teacher, so, you know, I'm sure you have ideas. I just think, you know, we want to be mindful of everyone who acted.
I would never give a piece of candy to anyone, ever.
I would not, so I don't know.
Yeah, no, but that's what I mean, so I don't know. I know, but I just feel like in general, like I, and I didn't think outside the box with like the pumpkin bread thing because I thought that was a wonderful experience for the kids and that's all great. But it was just more sort of an everyday sort of thing, that there's candy and then the candy is given out and not even necessarily because the policy just says reward, but like just in general. And I mean, I don't know if we could label it just candy because then if we, I suppose we could do that because when we say food, it's like, well, what about apples? It's a healthy choice, but well, maybe somebody else doesn't agree. It's just, it gets so dicey.
And it's also like, you know, the turkey trot, they give out hot chocolate and apples. So it's like, I feel like it's...
I would, I would recommend the committee review its policy ADF and consider language changes because without a review of that, you may be recommending something that you feel is already being covered by this policy.
Yeah.
So I would start there. And then the next step is if you have language changes that you'd like to propose, then they would go to the policy subcommittee.
So we, I assume, I'm looking at the agenda, that we are going to get an update on the school council. I wonder if this is something that could be brought to the school council as, you know, something for discussion because parents, administration, teachers have our presentation there as well. So just a thought.
It can. If there's a direction that the committee would like the council to consider, then I think that review would be helpful because we don't want to lead people to believe that they can create a policy or handbook change that would be in conflict with state regulation and law.
Yeah, no, I understand. I think it's just asking that group to take the policy and think out to execute it in a meaningful way.
Well, they can make recommendations for handbook policy.
Thank you for keeping the straight, whatever it was.
All right, is there any other discussion on, so we're, I guess that's something to add to next month's agenda to review policy ADF and, okay. All right, and then the next part is the status of incidents of hate speech. Mr. Bowdre?
It's in both parts. Do you want to hear this?
It is in both parts?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, never mind. Let's, I'm sorry, I only saw the water issues. All right, we'll move on to school committee goals, which Lori was going to compile. Oh.
Lori didn't compile. I think I misunderstood the request.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, no, so I don't have them compiled. Can I make a motion that we, I will send them to you?
Sure.
And?
We'll review them next meeting?
I apologize.
No, that's fine. All right, and then signing of warrants and signals, single signature warrants are all set. School cor, course, I can't talk tonight, sorry guys. School committee correspondence and reports, I'm not aware that we have any, or do we? Oh, sorry.
I had a big day.
Oh my gosh, I'm sorry. I thought Christine was later. I'm sorry.
That's true, but that party usually is earlier.
I'm sorry.
Not a problem, not a problem. I have brought with me nine warrants totaling $414,165.12 to be signed and then delivered to the Town Hall tomorrow. In addition, there were 10 single signature warrants totaling $454,561.91 signed by Jessica Page, which are at Town Hall for payment processing.
Thank you.
Could I, that's a good question. Could I please introduce Sarah? I know that many of you know Sarah, but that was good, I was going to do that later on. But this is Sarah Vicki, the new Director of Finance and Operations. Sarah has an interesting background to be sitting at this table. She's been a classroom teacher, and I know many of you already know her. She's been a classroom teacher, a department head, an assistant curriculum coordinator for mathematics, and then spent five years in Middlemore as a Director of Business there. So Sarah brings a nice, unique background that will be very helpful to us.
Welcome. Thanks, and I'm sorry about that. I'm going to blame, I stayed up till midnight on New Year's. My daughter got engaged, so I'm like, ah, anyway, yeah, so I think I'm still recovering. So, all right, we already did this school, no reports.
I would say there was one notification from the Department of Education regarding public comment on potential changes to the accountability system. And the proposal is to increase the weight in the accountability system of chronic absenteeism of students and to use three years of data in the calculation for the 24 results. So I just wanted to mention that, that was sent out to all school committee members today.
It was, okay, thank you. Any new business, anyone that wants to add it next time? Okay, unfinished business, I think we've already been, and then future agenda items. Is there anything anyone wants to add at this time that we haven't already talked about? Okay, so now we have the reports of subcommittees. I'll turn and oversee the policy, which I know we...
We haven't met since the past two meetings.
Right, so, but your, the changes were sent out to everyone. And so we voted last meeting to go over the first read or pass over the, waive the first read and then now we're on the second read, so is this the time when we would discuss it and actually vote on the policies to implement them?
You could, you could waive the second read and move right to discussion and possible vote.
Okay. Does, is that, do you guys want to waive the second read or? So I guess we'd have to do a vote to waive the second read and then have a discussion and a vote to approve the policies?
You could combine it.
You can, okay, so...
I think.
All right.
Depends on how you phrase it.
So we should waive the second read first if that's what we want to do, I would say, okay.
Can I make a motion to waive the second reading of the policy amendments? Do we have to read each of them? No?
You do.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Their policy is B E D H G B E B C D I G V I H A M A I H E F I H E G I H E H I J I J dash R I L D and J L C E.
You want to like the second?
Second.
Okay, we'll have a vote, all in favor? Aye. Okay, does anyone have any discussion of?
So now you would, perhaps someone would say, I would, if you want to do it in a big... if you want to do it in a big group, uh, I vote to approve, um, the following policies. I make a motion to approve the following policies. Someone could second it, and then you could have discussion.
Got it, okay.
Before you vote.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem. But you'd list all those.
Right, you have to list them again, right.
Can we do it?
Sure.
Okay.
You did a great job last time. Round two.
I move to approve, um, policy amendments to policies B D. I was, yeah, B, let me start. B E D H, G B E B. Start from the beginning. Did a good job the first time. So policies B E D H, G B E B C D, I G V, I H A M A, I H B F, I H B G, I H B H, I J, I J dash R, I L D, and J L C E.
Second. Okay, so is there a discussion of any of the policies that you questions on? Anyone? All right, so we have a vote?
Aye.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, negotiations. Um. Do I say where we are, or?
Um, we have another meeting scheduled on January 16th, with the Halifax Paris.
Okay. All right.
Sorry, what was the date?
January 16th.
All right, Pilgrim Area Collaborative?
I finally, um, was able to get touch, and we, there's a Zoom meeting on Thursday, so.
Okay.
Send information for that.
Great, thank you. Youth and Rec?
Um, they have not met since the last time, and, um, I can report that they are still doing after-school sports, which is doing amazing, and, um, as well as some new programs that, um, should be starting up very soon, if they happen already.
Okay. Um, PTO?
So their last meeting was November 13th. And, or was that ours?
I think that was ours.
I use the same document, I use the same document to update either or. Uh, most of their last meeting after that then was mostly surrounded, um, getting the mingle and jingle ready. Um, and then they did not have a December meeting, which was like, it would have been shortly right after the mingle and jingle. So there wasn't much more to support than getting ready for that.
Okay. Capital budget.
We're going to hear from Principal Bowdre his presentation this evening.
Okay, admin review?
We have one scheduled for February 8th.
Great, school council?
Um, we have a meeting on December 20th. Minutes from the November meeting, and we talked about survey, school council survey results from '21 and '23. And noticed that was in three of our areas, and we continue to work on the student handbook revisions.
Okay. All right, thank you. And then Union 31 has, we had a meeting after our last meeting, but it was like, the two days after it, but I don't remember what we.
So, um, I missed that one because of parent conferences at my school, so.
Let's see.
I'm trying to find.
Presentations.
It was the presentations, yep.
Oh, right, it was online.
From Dr. Panarese, uh, special education.
Thank you.
Melissa Farrell, uh, presented curriculum, and Steve Pello, our technology director, presented, um, technology budget overviews that evening. Thank you. Seems so long ago now.
I know, I was like, it's like an afternoon ago. Um, so we did, uh, it's not on here, but we did establish the DEIB committee, subcommittee, last time, which, um, does that mean we can't talk about it? Or, because we had asked for it to be, I mean, it's, we talked about adding it as a subcommittee, but.
We can add it as a subcommittee for next time.
Okay.
Um. And I believe, uh, Principal Bowdre is going to be giving you an update on some, um, programmatic initiatives regarding some of the concerns that were raised last time.
Okay.
So that, that might be an opportunity to just, to speak on it. He has it listed, um, under his, so we could discuss some of it then.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right, I'll turn the time over to you, Principal Bowdre.
Any particular area?
You can just go in order.
Okay, is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, start with the SCL data that we pulled from Panorama. So grades three through five, they had, um, we have results from that. We had, all the areas were in green, and that was supportive relationships, self-management, social awareness, growth mindset, self-efficacy, and emotion regulation. There was one area that was in orange, which was a lower percentile, and that was on grit. And that leads us to believe there was a question that targeted our goals. It was how long can students stay focused clinical? So that was the one area that was on the low. But all, all of the SCL, they compared them nationally. So all, everything was in, in green that we reported. Grades six through 12 does a different, um, survey, and those were also in green, and those three areas, they only had three areas for the sixth grade, and it was rigorous expectations, teacher-student relationships, and school safety, and those were all in green compared nationally. And then, that we point out the school council survey results that we did in 2023. We ported out that the relationships were at 90%. Challenge was at 88%, inclusivity was at 90%, and resilience was at 86%. And that's based upon the four categories. We have like, three or four questions in each area, and those, those are just like, a combination of the three or four questions that were added for each of those, that you know spots. The STAR data? Is it, were we looking at just winter benchmarks? Is that what, because we did a presentation last, last month. So just, we haven't, we're meeting with teachers now for this week, because we just did them right before the break. Um, so we're meeting in grade levels to review the data. But as a whole, our ELA scores improved by, uh, let's see, improved by 6% from 46% to 52% for meeting and exceeding. And then our math scores on STAR went from 50% to 63%. So it was a 13% increase. Those are the testing in grades two through six. So we're meeting with teachers this week. We started meetings before the break, and we continue this week, so we can plan accordingly for our interventions.
Okay.
At, at this time, could I ask the chair to maybe entertain a motion to, uh, move the capital plan and budget narrative to later in the meeting, when we discuss the preliminary budget discussion? I believe you need a vote from the school committee to change the.
Order.
The order of that one, because it's not listed under both.
Sure. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to move the capital plan and budget narrative down to preliminary budget discussion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Water. Uh, so the update that we have on the water is that we have, uh, a company called Sarian that is going to conduct the testing, and that's going to actually be tomorrow. And they're going to be testing the 12 sites that were previously tested, so.
I will add, so the 12 sites will be tested, and from there, there'll be a determination in terms of what areas need to be tested next. So that's just the starting point for the Sarian testing, uh, and the way that it needs to be done in terms of flushing and then a period of time after before the water is tested. So, uh, this, we, we will be able to get in all 12 tomorrow, but we anticipate there'll be additional tests forthcoming.
So just to make sure I understand, so 12 were tested originally? Is that correct, or?
Two, we, we tested every year, and so.
And it's just different ones every year?
Random sites. And they tested two, and, uh, one of them was elevated, and then we went back and tested them again, and came back that it was elevated. So then we tested an additional 10 sites throughout the building.
And how did those 10 sites come up?
Those were elevated.
The 10 were, all of them?
Uh, yes, they were.
Okay.
And all in various levels.
So now this additional testing, is it more precise? Or lets you know how to mitigate it?
It's actually done by the actual professionals that do the testing. I think, I, I think because when the testing is done, we have to flush the system entirely, and then we have to wait six hours before the samples are taken. It has to be taken between the s, the s, six hours and 12 hours. It's done by the actual company.
So the ones you did before was the town folks, right? Okay. All right, and in the meantime, water is only being used for hand washing, and there's the bub, like, the bowl and spring type thing everywhere.
Eight water bubblers that are placed throughout the building.
And they're just not using, what, what's going on in the cafeteria?
In the cafeteria, there's only bottled water that would be for any type of cooking or washing of produce.
Okay. Anyone else have a question?
Yeah, what are budget implications with all this?
Yeah, it is, it is going to be a, an expense, um, but one that we have to bear, um, because it, we, we don't know the reality of the lead situation, and we certainly, um, need to incur this cost at this time. So until we know otherwise, uh, we're going to continue to provide water, um, for students and staff.
Absolutely.
Is, does it fall underneath the town or our budget for Halifax Elementary for remediation?
Again, I think it depends on what's determined and what needs to be done in terms of how that will all be settled. Um, but it's my understanding right now that we are paying for the water through our local budget, even despite the freeze. This is seen as a necessary expense, so that's how we, that's how we're handling it.
Definitely necessary, absolutely. Wonder, it's just. No question.
Glad you agree.
No, it's just, you wonder, okay, you know, how much?
Right.
That's more, you know, absolutely, but.
Right now, we're operating in three five-gallon jugs, on average, per day.
So for, like, the, I saw the lunch menu for tomorrow, Caesar salad. So is that all that lettuce being washed with bottled water?
Bottled water.
And this, so tomorrow's testing is the first time new testing is done since we spoke and since the November 28th? There was nobody that could get here faster than that?
We tried, trust me. Definitely, we're hoping that it could be done sooner. But weren't able to, up down the building that we will do the testing.
And so they're doing 12 random sites, or the same 12 sites?
The same 12 to, to compare.
How many total sites are there?
Oh, um.
Just curious, like, of how many versus, because, you know, this could end up being, like, huge, that's what my.
I mean, it's probably easily 100.
So like, every classroom has a sink, then you have the bubblers and the bathrooms and.
Yes.
So basically.
Some classrooms have, like, kindergarten has two.
Right.
They'll have, they'll have the sink and a bubbler with it, but then they'll have a bathroom in, in there as well, so they're.
And you said that the water, the main water line coming into the building was not elevated, right?
It was. It was over the point one.
So, is that where we would, well, not you, but that, was that where they would start then, is with the walk?
That was one of the sites that they would retest, because that's one of the 12 that we tested previously.
But it just seems like the water department should be making an action plan, I would think, because if the water coming into the building is already elevated, then it's really a non-issue of where else is elevated, because it's already elevated on its way in. So I would think that's where the water department should be starting, and they haven't given you any information about that?
I don't, I just have.
No, I know, but they have a company, professionals, experts that do it.
Can we ask Sluckman a question? Is that, okay. He's like, shoot. Um, so this testing is done in all town buildings, right?
Um, I believe so. I can double check, but I'm, I'm not sure, to be honest.
Because I just wonder if we're not the only building with the issue, and if, is it something?
I know, I know it's not perfect or long as well, but I know it's happened a little bit in the past, um, where it's a flushing system over the summer, where usually where the water got sat all summer long, we have to flush it, but I used to get that water that's been sitting there. Um, so I don't know if maybe that wasn't done, that we usually do this year, or, uh.
Yeah.
What it was, or.
I think that's, I mean, it could be the case. I mean, we typically flush after long weekends and vacations and in the summertime, um, but in this instance.
So we don't know if the water was flushed before school started?
No, I, I think, I think this question about how, the timing of the flushing, not whether or not it was done, but whether or not it was done in a way that would give us, um, valid results. And so by replicating the process with the company that, that does this, we're going to have a, hopefully, a confirmation or a different set of data from which to then move forward and determine what needs to be done next.
Okay, that makes total sense.
Yeah, but it was, it was elevated on, it's supposed to be September and November.
So.
But we're not 100% above the flushing that happened prior to.
Are Tuesday November or September?
When, when the testing was done.
So both times?
That, that's my understanding.
So do we, do we think that the test, the flushing would have happened between September and November? Because I, I understand, like, from the September read, it might have been read before the new school year flushing happened, but is there a, what I'm gathering is, you're saying that it didn't technically happen until after the November reading?
I am not certain.
Okay, okay.
I just, I'm not certain it happens when the flushing, my understanding is when you test, you have to flush the system prior to and test within six hours, and take the sample at six hours, between six hours and 12 hours inside that window.
So, and, and I, just for my ignorance, because this is very new, and I have nothing, you know, have a background in water management, um, although my dad was a plumber. I feel like even if you flush it and you get a better result, if you're still getting high lead levels, like, how long does that flushing guarantee that you have less lead in your water or acceptable levels? I know, I'm, I'm just throwing the question. I'm not expecting you to answer, but I think these are questions that.
So DE, DEP has a, a fact sheet, uh, that's available online, um, that's available to, to the community, that's available to school committee members, that has a lot of information about what these levels are and are not, and what they may or may not mean to your community. Um, and I believe that the letter that went out, there was a link to that. Does that sound familiar? The DEP letter had a, a reference to a website where you could find more information?
So to summarize, sorry, just, no, sorry, I just know. So, we're not sure if it was the timing of flushing that impacted the lead results. So the reason we're retesting with someone who, this is what they do, they're professionals, is to make sure either that those tests were valid or they weren't valid. And then we'll go from there.
Yes.
Okay, I just, it, okay, that helps a ton.
Can I ask just two follow-up questions? So one is, have we had a history in years past of this type of scenario?
This is the first year that they ever told us that there was an issue with it. That's why we did the retest.
Okay, all right, so I think that I've been mentioned before, and I apologize if, I forgot. Um, but the other question I had is. But the other question I have is, um, if there is an issue, I mean, it's involved in building pipes and all that. That is not something, like replacement of pipelines into a school building. That is a conversation for capital budget.
We have a placeholder on the capital budget plan because we don't know what the results may or may not show. We don't know to what extent it will be a building issue. We don't know to what extent it will be a town issue. We, at this point, we don't have any, any information. But we do have it listed under the capital plan so that it remains on the top of everyone's mind in terms of this, this could be an expensive issue, it may not be. We honestly don't know what this.
And if it were a large of expense, it would have to go through like the town meeting process, correct? Or am I mistaken?
Do you want to speak too?
It would depend on the scope of the problem. We just don't know, we don't have those answers just yet.
How long is our opportunity question, Christine, you know that? I appreciate that you don't have all the answers.
Yeah, we're learning through this, we're just, you know, we had a meeting earlier today and I was asking some of these same questions about the, when, when the pipes are flushed, what is the timeframe? And you, and I said, oh, is it, are you giving us enough time? And I was just, just asking questions that anybody would ask. So we're still, we have a placeholder, we're aware of it, the town is aware of it. So we're just trying to do their own thing and do the testing as appropriately as possible.
Do you know how long the test results take? Just cur, out of curiosity.
I don't remember.
I don't. Sorry.
Usually, I, I want to say at least 10 days. I don't know that they come in any sooner than that.
I'm just wondering, you know?
Yeah.
And it's being done tomorrow?
Tomorrow morning.
Excellent. Okay.
So thank you, Mr. Hodger, for dealing with all the questions that were.
Sorry. It's not me.
Oh, sorry. So do we know if the main water supply is being tested tomorrow, the, that's not coming into the building?
It was one of the original 12 that was tested, so it should be on the list.
Well, you said it was random tomorrow, right?
No, no, it's the same 12 that were already tested, so they can make sure they.
And do you, I mean, I'm wondering if, you know, the question about other buildings, I feel like that schools and daycares have a different threshold for the levels. So that might be one of the things, just to answer the thing that you mentioned, so.
Makes sense, some children.
So even though the other buildings maybe are at a different level, that's fine, but not for schools and daycares. So just to answer that. And then, um, your email did not have that link to the DEP information. And I think in general, I think parents could need an update, if you wouldn't mind. I think there's a lot of anxiety surrounding it. I've, you know, get lots of questions about it. And so I think that an update, even just saying, we were working to try to find another independent professional company to come in and they're coming tomorrow and as soon as we have those results. But rest assured, you know, all those precautions that you mentioned in your first email are still being.
Absolutely.
Are all in place.
Is it possible to invite the water department to our next meeting? Because we have questions. Because I feel like if it's coming from the main, then that's a water department area that we need to ask them the questions.
Or could we, are you, I know you said you met with the water department, Bernal, right? Are you meeting again? Could one of us come sit in on one of those meetings?
I imagine, I mean, we met, um, it was, I think, it was July, it was Cody was in the meeting.
Yeah, no, I know, that was probably like around December 11th or 12th.
Like that day.
Right, yeah. So are, do you not have a plan to meet again or, I'm just wondering.
I was waiting for the testing to be out. And then, as soon as the results come in, then sure, then we'll pass it down.
Yeah, maybe you can update us and then if maybe we could ask questions that we have so that, then we don't have so many questions here. If I could ask questions once we know the data.
Just to answer the questions that we had with how long it takes for the results to come back. I just texted our facilities director and he said the last time it took two weeks to get the results.
And then the last thing.
Anything else on the water?
Oh.
I think I'm right now, thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, and last one there. All right, so we have, I thought, wait, I would do is kind of share like how many incidents, like in general, kind of that Brian and I have fielded and then can talk about our plan that we have moving forward. So as of today, we've had 92 incidents total that have come in and then we categorize them according to our handbook.
Did you say 92?
Yeah, total incidents.
This year?
As of this year, from September 1st.
Sorry, you're saying behavioral incidents, not necessarily.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, should have.
Okay.
Should have, sorry, I was just kind of giving a generalized.
And what, what classifies a behavioral incident?
Anything that kind of, that gets sent our way, Brian, I don't know.
Does this include the bus?
It does include the bus. It's, it includes K through six. We just kind of track it when incidents come in and then we code it in terms of.
Okay.
Our handbook, you know, violation. So we had like 39% of them were code of conduct, 30% of them were peer conflict, 13% was inappropriate language, another 13% was non-compliance. And then we had 4% of the samples. It's not like a perfect, that fits into each category, but of these incidents, we, we estimated between 75 and 80% of them were with our fifth and sixth grade students. But then specifically, we did have an incident that was brought up last, last meeting where there was hateful words towards another student. We did, we obviously investigated that in a parent meeting, we did a student meeting. There was discipline that was administered according to our handbook. We have had no further incidents in regards to that since then. We have had incidents where there's been writing on the bathroom walls that are definitely inappropriate. They're derogatory. We've had two situations where there's writing on the walls. So what we did, we had regular check-ins that, in the bathrooms, primarily it's up in our sixth grade, but it's not only isolated to those particular bathrooms. So we had our custodians and Brian and I were checking and it was typically in the boys' room. We also instituted a program, an online program called hallway paths. And I think they use that up in the middle of the high school. And that has cut down pretty much everything that, any incident that we've had in the bathrooms at all.
What hallway paths is, I think I know, but.
It's when a student leaves the classroom, they go online and they just type in where they're going, whether it's to the nurse or to the bathroom to get a drink of water, to go for a walk. At times they're out and at times they're in. It keeps track of how many times they leave the classroom and where they're going. And also, not only are fifth and sixth grader using it, but also are specialists. Because sometimes, you know, they wouldn't be privy to, you know, how many times a student may leave. They always see their specialist for 40 minutes.
And that's just fifth and sixth grade?
Yes. And it's, that's brand new and it's, we haven't used it previously. It was, it was shared with us as like a draft to try it out. But then when we had some incidents that were, kids were writing on the bathroom walls and we couldn't figure out for the life of us who it was, we're looking at cameras, we're looking at, at sign out logs in the homerooms and things like that. Once we did the hallway paths, it's really helped us out a lot. So we actually know where students are, we know which bathroom it is and who was there. So it's been, it's really been great.
Do the stu, and the students sign it out, say who's to say they don't just not.
The teachers have to sign them, sign them back in. So that, that's the one little snap that does kind of stop teachers a little bit when they have to stop and like check the student back in.
But then, at least then they can see that the child actually wrote, where, where they were actually asked to go is also what's in hall pass. You know, they could say, I'm going to get a drink. I don't even know if the bubbler is the same place as the bathroom, but I'm going to the bubbler, right? But meanwhile, they went to the bathroom and then you look at it and you're like, oh, that child just went to the bubbler. They're free and clear, right? So the teacher gets that opportunity to kind of double check.
They do, but I can't say that they're.
They might not be able to always do that again if they're busy. But I was just wondering whether or not it was ever seen by another set of eyes or if the kids can just.
We have it in the office, so Ellen and Kim can see it and Brian and I can see it. So we kind of know, we'd be like, oh, Brian has gone to the bathroom three, three times and it's only nine o'clock. Somebody go check in and see what's going on or.
If there is a suspicious incident, we usually go to the hallway cameras. They will.
So then you can.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that makes sense. Great.
With the, the hallway pass system, I know at the high school, if a student went to say the nurse, the nurse would, could they go into the system and say, the student arrived at this time and left me to go back to their room at this time? Are we doing that end of it as well?
I'd have to check with Derry. I'm not 100% that she has the same kind of access, but I know that Ellen and Kim do, so they can see it. But I'd have to double check with Derry to see if like she checks. Because she has a different system where she has, uh, I forget what the nurses use, what's.
SNAP?
SNAP. So they, so the nurses use SNAP, so they have to document every single time a student comes in for any particular reason. So she's always documenting in there.
I only ask that because I know in upper grades at least, there would be students who left the nurse's office, but then dilly-dallying through the hallways and came back late. And when you ask them where they were, it was at the nurse. But you had no idea that they had been dismissed from the nurse 15 minutes ago.
Right.
So.
I mean, we try and make sure that they're being timely, but we can't always guarantee that they are. But, you know, teachers are teaching and they're trying to.
Exactly.
You know, afford to have. It is, that is the one part of it that it does slow the teachers down a little bit because they have to have check-ins, student that's in or out.
But it sounds pretty effective, so.
It definitely is. And it's rather than picking up the cameras and then searching the entire building and what cameras and where they were.
Have the students, do they understand what the purpose of it is or are they, did you just say, hey, we have a new system and?
I imagine that.
I mean, they're smart, I know.
They're ready to accept it.
Yeah, I think that they realize, I mean, because they have, they have their agenda books and I think they figured out a way to like not necessarily log their time in and time out of where they're going. So now they can see, because I could see a student, I'd be like, you were just in the bathroom for the third time, it's nine o'clock. Do you want to talk like what's going on, so.
It tracks how many trips they do and then also like if Mr. Beierin signed somebody out, it shows who else in grade is in the bathroom. So if he's going to the bathroom to hang out with a buddy that's in the sharpness class, we can track that.
And we can flag it. So if there's students that have had previous incidents, so then there's a flag, flagging system in there. So we're like, this particular individual has had incidents in the bathroom. Or they're not allowed to use the boys' bathroom on the second floor, they have to use the nurse's bathroom.
Well, and it sounds like it's good preparation for middle school, honestly.
That's my understanding is that they use it.
Yeah.
So that's, that's what we got, so.
So I have a couple more questions, sorry. Um, so this is a new system this year?
Hallway pass.
Okay. Is it something you've had access to and you just didn't utilize or just it was a new draft or?
I would say, was it last year that they pitched to us and we, we had a little bit of, you know, think back from the staff, that they weren't really ready for, you know, like how much time it takes and, you know, they have agenda books where they sign out. But I do think that they found that it has better effectiveness. It's not as time consuming as previously.
So I have a couple of questions around, just part of the discussion that we had last time was how is this message, how are these incidents being communicated? Kind of all state papers, like when there's an incident, clearly there's an investigation and you talk with the students that are involved and there's, you know, corrective action or whatever at that point. That doesn't always resonate with from a communications perspective. How the issues were handled, you know, how, what, kind of closing the loop with staff, making sure, can they report the incident, understands what happened and, you know, the, the kind of breakdown of how to communicate that these issues happened and that things were done about that. That was, I think, part of the reason we had the intense discussion in November about, you know, shifting the culture a little bit or trying to be more.
Are you getting that it's, are you getting reports that they're not?
No, based on what you're, what, what I'm asking is, um, so when we spoke last, you told us about the incidents in the bathrooms. It sounds like this system has kind of gotten at that. But then you also mentioned, did you say last week there was an incident of, I may have misheard you, hateful language?
No, that, that original one, that was in September. But I think what we've seen, when we've talked with our fifth grade, fifth and sixth grade teachers, is that we have been hearing derogatory negative comments. And that's why, that was my, my last basis, is we are working with Dr. Carlos Hoyt, who's a speaker and a consultant that we had mentioned last month, or last, last meeting that we had. So Ryan and I and Brian and one of the fifth grade teachers met with this person just to kind of share like what, what the issues we were seeing. And then this individual shared what they could bring to us. So we're, right now, we're in the process of just finalizing the dates. And it's a really neat model, but what he would present to us is that he would present a workshop with teachers first and then kind of get a feel of like what they're fielding and how to support teachers in that sense. And then what he would do is a workshop with fifth and sixth grade students afterwards. So we're just trying to pick the dates for that. And just talking about the inappropriate language and the terms that the fifth and sixth grade teachers have been hearing. And how do they, I mean, it's good for Brian and I too, like how do we field those situations when they come across? I mean, not everything is, is about inappropriate comment, but it's, it does happen with students of that age and with things they're seeing on social media or whether with the hearing on the bus or.
Yeah.
Music lyrics. And when we spoke, when we met with Carlos, he really did, I don't know, Ryan, you're in the meeting, feel free. I, I just felt that he really had a nice way about him. He wasn't, he was very approachable. He seemed like he had a good message that he was, was ready to share and really wanted to kind of work with teachers first and then get, get the feedback and then tailor it for the students. And then he wanted the groups, he didn't want, because we have 92 students in sixth grade and we have 85 in fifth grade. So he didn't want to have the whole groups together. He actually wanted to go and do just much smaller groups. So we're going to do four, the plan is to do four presentations to the fifth and sixth grade. So it'll be like two for fifth grade, so we put two classrooms together just so it would be a little bit more intake of the workshop that he was looking to give.
I think that's great. I think part of the discussion we had last month is that this isn't one of those situations where you just do one and done. You know, it's kind of like an ongoing continuum to shift culture and awareness, you know, of what inclusion and acceptance is. So I think these all sound like really great steps and thank you for giving us those updates. And I, I look forward to hearing more about Mr. Hoyt.
Do you have any information you can share, like a website or something that you could send to us? The other question I have, sorry, were you, no, I'm sorry.
I was just going to ask if, if it's possible, again, knowing that this is new, but if it would be possible for someone in the school committee to sit in on any one of the sessions, maybe not with the students, but like with the teachers, just to understand like what, you know, maybe is part of our DEPI group.
We're hopeful to get, get this going in February, but we're just trying to work with Carlos to see what his schedule is. And then we're working grant, grant funded for what, what the program is. We were back and forth a little bit with about what his, his heart, what he can do for us, so that's.
That's great.
He was able to really work with us, so it's, it's been great to work with him, it's great to communicate back and forth. Because when Brian and I were like, oh, we've talked to the teachers, this is what we're looking at. And then, because he started what he typically does. And then we were talking with teachers, we're like, all right, can we tweak it this way? So this is what we've been seeing. And so he was like, absolutely, so he's tailored it his way. We're hopeful that we can kind of. So he's tailored it his way, and we're hopeful that we can kind of solidify some dates. And then obviously, we, you know, notify families of what's going on, and then we're having Carlos come in to talk with the teachers, and then Carlos is going to come in and talk about our students and all.
Yeah, I mean, you know, again, not to get too far out of things, but it would be great if further down the line, there could be some sort of a community program, or, you know, similar kind of, the DA's office used to do, and I think they still do, the, who else? Yeah, at the middle school, I think at the high school, they did presentations on keeping kids safe online, and it was open up to families. So I think this would be a great opportunity to figure out how we could do that, open it to...
I think this, this does have that potential, because we have had that in the past, where we've had social media presentations, we've had substance abuse, and it's kind of like that one shot that happens each time we try and tailor it for fifth and sixth. But this workshop model seems like it would be really good, because it's one with the teachers, and then it's with the students, and then there's consultation and, like, follow-up afterwards. There should be some good work that comes out of it, so...
Yeah. I appreciate the openness of the discussion. I think it's something that happens in every school, and the best that we can do is talk about it. We, you know, we owe it to the entire community, to be honest.
It does, and I think he, he seems from our brief discussions that it could easily lend itself towards conversations in the middle school and the high school. So I, and even I've shared it with some of the other administrators, so it's, you know, instead of us being the only ones, you know, we taught, there's always these types of incidents, but we can share them all, and hopefully, like I said, he's more than just a one, one horse pony there, he seems like he really is invested in, you know, educating staffing and students, and not just, we've had people that come in and they just go for, just they just give a presentation to the students, and then that's it. But he has more, he's going to work with, take the feedback, so we're excited to follow up on some dates. We'll let you know as soon as we get the dates.
Thank you. You said it's grant-funded, do we already have the grant, or are we applying for a new grant?
Right now, in the process of using Title I grant.
Okay.
And then I've already reached out to PTO in case we need additional.
That's great. Yeah, they used to help with the anti-bullying and whatnot...
Right.
...in the past. My only other question, I think this is a fantastic start, is obviously, fifth and sixth grade, we're kind of getting on it late. Will he have possibly suggestions of how to introduce these topics into younger grades? Because it's kind of like, once it's already started...
Right.
You know, like, it's, you know, to kind of be preventative as opposed to reactionary?
Absolutely. I mean, that's something that we can bring up...
Okay.
...when we sit down with them and see what we could do for students in K to four.
Okay. Thank you.
In the same vein, is there opportunity, I mean, the only time I would imagine that you could have a workshop for the staff would be during the March in-service day, right? I mean, when else would you have the time for the teachers to do that?
What, we would, we were trying to plan it during staff meeting, because we have staff meetings every month.
Is that enough time? Would that have to be like an hour, or...
So we, we have an hour-long staff meetings that are scheduled, so that's, that's what we would set up. He's looking for either 60 to 90 minutes, so that we would be able to do that, contract with teachers.
Right, that's why, and I didn't feel like that was enough time, and it's like the end of the day, you know, I didn't know. So I guess my thought is, if he doesn't have time before the March PD, do you already have PD ready to go for that in-service day?
So March, I think it's all set, ready to go.
We do, and then I think, Kane, just to go back to, there's, within the proposal, is the opportunity for smaller groups of teachers to do some consultation. So during the teacher meeting blocks, during the contractual day, teachers could choose to utilize that time to access, like, a follow-up. So it could both be a general presentation, but also for those more interested, or for people wanting to work on a smaller-scale challenge or opportunity, it sounds like that's within the program that he outlined for us. And so I think that's an opportunity. And I would just add too that Mr. Bodry has included teachers every step of the way, both at the meeting, the initial meeting, in the proposal feedback, over break, there was an email from a grade five teacher. So I think he's trying to design a solution that includes the people who worked the most with the kids. So I, that's another reason I think that it has a chance to be, make a difference, because, you know, the teachers need to be, they know the students and the classes the best, so I think that's part of what seems to be going in the right direction, and so that's an important piece of it, too.
And this wouldn't replace, and this is your group, I apologize for not getting your name, but the group that you have across the district, looking at inclusion. This is still ongoing, you still have a representation from Halifax, the town?
We do.
Okay.
Yep. This will be in, in addition to that, but...
So I'll let you know when to get those dates.
Okay, thank you.
And then we'll plan on a communication to families, so just letting you know.
And if, yeah, if you don't mind sending out information about Dr. Carlos Hoyt, please. Thanks.
CarlosHoyt.com.
Oh, okay, thanks.
I know.
All right. Thank you. Now I'll turn the time over to Christine.
And I want to turn it over to Sarah.
Oh, okay.
Sarah's going to do the financial report today.
Welcome, Sarah.
So you should have seen in the, in the shared folder, the financial reports are in the shared folder for the school committee. I just want to run through some things of note. There is a deficit in the indemnification line that is due to a change in provider, the insurance provider for that. There is a deficit in the professional development line, that is the tuition reimbursement line. That is something that I've taken into consideration for the FY25 budget. There is a deficit in the tech hardware line, that deficit is absorbed within the category for technology. And then there is a deficit in the special education contracted services, which is OTPT services.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. For the curriculum instruction assessment update, right after our last meeting in late November, we continued our work with our consultant from Research for Better Teaching, Dr. Durkin. We did learning walks on November 29th, which Mr. Bodry, myself, Dr. Prue, Mr. DeSantis, and Dr. Durkin visited seven classrooms, and looked at differentiation, learning centers, engagement. Mr. Bodry followed up with an email to all staff about the, the learning walks, that work continues. We'll do them again at Halifax on February 8th. And in addition to that, we also have data analysis sessions, looking at the STAR data and the DIBELS data, and that work has been going on for over, over two years. So just wanted to highlight that, that work is continuing, and overlaps some of the testing that you had been asking about today. So just wanted to acknowledge that work, and the work of the teachers and administration to keep that momentum going.
Thank you. Your turn, Jill.
Thank you.
And Kane, I see.
So I'd like to begin my district update with a thank you to Christine Healy for her 28 years of service to Halifax Elementary School and to the Silver Lake Schools. We're going to miss Christine, this is her last school committee meeting. Christine, as you know, is not only a remarkable business director, but human being, and we all enjoy working with her. She's always very patient and very kind, and has worked very hard to get us all up to speed, trying to plan for her transition. So we're going to miss her, and we love her very much.
Thank you very much, that was quite kind, I like that. You're always kind. But thank you for the applause also, thank you.
I was wondering if it was okay to clap, and I was like, "Oh, good."
It's been an amazing journey, and I have learned a lot, and I've met a lot of wonderful people, and...
You're a great question answerer.
Thank you for being part of the journey.
Thank you.
You've taught a lot.
Yeah. I was going to say, you answer questions so great, so wonderfully.
So that was, that's, that's a tough act to follow, but now I have to get back to the other stuff. That was the most important piece that I wanted to mention tonight. Also, the Commissioner of Education approved the amended Silver Lake agreement, which includes the incorporation of pre-K...
Yay.
...into, officially into our, our Silver Lake regional agreement, but also all of the updates to bring the agreement into accordance with current laws and regulations. So that, that is official, that was passed in the Town of Halifax, and then approved by the Commissioner. So we received that update this week.
Yay.
The second, the next item is the enrollment in your packet includes pre-K. And so those are the numbers that we'll be using for the assessments and the shared costs. But I just wanted to let you know that that, that updated pre-K enrollment October 1st chart is in your, in your packet as well. The next item is the 22, 20, 24, 25 calendar, and the big changes here, sorry, I lost my place, is September 3rd, we'd like to propose an in-service for teachers, since it's an election day, and our schools are used as sites, some of our schools are used as, as voting sites. So although we won't be able to have the in-service day in February, as we've done in the past, we think it's necessary because of the elections to hold it on September 3rd instead. The first day of school would start on August 28th for students. The December holiday, I would propose the week of the 23rd up through the 1st as the vacation. I didn't seem to make sense to open up school for one day during that week, but I wanted to point that out to you, because some schools are, and other school systems are not. So it, you're going to see variation on that. If, if we did not have any weather-related cancellations, our last day of school would be June 13th. We have worked in up to five potential weather-related days, which would bring us as late as June 23rd. And so I just wanted to ask if you have any questions, but other than that, we, we try to keep the, the calendar basically the same from year to year. I like to try to point out any, any differences.
We will have to vote the calendar at some point, but this is a draft at this point?
No, this would be, I would, if possible, the other committees have reviewed and voted, so if Halifax could review and vote this evening...
Okay.
...it is on for a possible vote.
Okay. If anyone would want to make a motion, then we could have a discussion.
Make a motion to approve the 24, 25 school year calendar as presented by Dr. Prue.
Give it a second.
Second.
Any discussion, questions?
So all of the other ones already approved in, all of the districts?
So, so far, I'm trying to remember, because it was...
Is that right?
Plimpton approved? And maybe, I'd have to go back to my other...
Yeah.
So usually there's one in, in service in February, but it's not...
No.
Usually it's like right after, before, yeah.
Vacation.
Can I just ask a question to clarify? You said that you have five days built into the calendar for potential closures? And does that tend to, the last day of school, is that including those five days at the 20, June 23rd, or is that without those days?
It includes the five school cancellation days.
So that could move up if there's not five days?
That, yes, the, if there, we didn't have, we could get out as early as June 13th.
Okay.
So my question about the other towns is just that, I don't know when there's ever an opportunity for us to get together to discuss the calendar, rather than just saying we sort of keep the same thing year to year, without giving it any thoughtfulness? Like, I don't know when my computer said, when there might be an opportunity to do that, like...
You could recommend it as a joint committee agenda item?
So can I ask what you're thinking in terms of potential changes to the calendar?
Um, I think it's one of the same one I said last year, that I just don't think the words get ready, should be on the calendar, I think anything in regards to religion should be on the calendar. So, and how we would make that change is up for a discussion. My suggestion last year was that we just say, "No school", like, either we have school or we don't, that's all parents need to know. Otherwise, they can figure out why we don't have school, or why we do have school, but, or just change that one to "No school" day, and there's several other districts that follow that sort of model for their school calendars. So, but it doesn't make sense to just try to start that conversation here and now, and it's already practically on the presses, so that's fine. Just something to think about, I guess I can ask for that at the joint meeting then.
And the other, oh, sorry.
So, I, so process is a fairly long process. I, I'm wondering if we vote to approve it, if language changes, like, what's being suggested can be brought to a joint meeting after the fact, and the calendar can be amended with that terminology?
You, you, you could make a...
Yes, I'm not suggesting that we have school on the Friday, because I understand attendance would be low, and it would be a...
I think...
It's like times. Yeah, so it's not like a, it would be changing the calendar?
We'd have...
It would be changing what's written on the pa, piece of paper.
We'd have to take a look and see if there's any policy language regarding the calendar in the policies. And off the top of my head, I don't know how specific that is. So one, we'd have to find out what the school committee's policy is on the calendar, and how specific it is with regards to this.
That's good.
I, you, you could vote the calendar contingent upon the change. We believe that Silver Lake and Plimpton have already approved the calendar. Another area would be to approach the Union 31 Chair and the Silver Lake Chair to see if it could become an, an agenda item at our joint school committee meeting in February.
And I just want to clarify, the reason I was asking the question was, there has been discussion around trying to change the school break, get rid of February and April break into some of March, and I wasn't sure if that's where you were going with that, which would be a substantial change, not just for our school district, but surrounding school districts, so that was, that was...
No, I hadn't, I hadn't heard of that, and that only gets you a net gain of three days anyway, because you're still two holidays and the other two breaks, so it doesn't, I don't really see that as being helpful, but, yeah, so that wasn't anywhere where I was going with that, but, thank you.
So do you want to vote on the motion that we have, or change the motion?
No, I'm, I don't want to hold up the process of calendar, I just was wondering, you know, last year I sort of missed it, and I guess that was my own fault for missing it again this year. So I think that just how we can get ahead of it for next year would be good, but at this point, I'm not going to hold up the calendar for all the other towns. So I'm fine with ending my discussion and we can vote.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. So then our next item, I would ask if Principal Bodry could pull up the presentation. We're going to, in your packet, you have the, the slides for this evening, but in addition, you have Principal Bodry's budget narrative, as well as a, the capital plan. I'd like to propose we go through the presentation first, because through the presentation, we'll cover a number of items in his narrative, but also some insight into the capital plan, which is in your folder as well. And he's, Principal Bodry can certainly go into more detail with regards to the capital plan when we come to that, that item. So... So each year, we ask, we begin our budget process with input from our special education director, our technology director, Melissa Farrell, works with the principals as well with regards to curriculum. We also ask our principals to work with their staff in terms of determining their needs for the upcoming budget season. And then in the past, it has been Christine, and this year it is Sarah, then works to move over costs such as utilities and salaries and things of that nature to help build the preliminary budget for this evening. As always, our first and primary goal is to support the needs of our students, both academically and developmentally. We strive to maintain class sizes where possible and to provide the necessary structures for effective instruction. In addition, we'd like to consider and respond to the fiscal conditions of the town. And for that reason, we provide you with a level services budget, which is different than level funded. Level funded would mean taking the same amount as last year and potentially eliminating certain things from the budget in order to make it meet the level fund, whereas level services, this is what it would cost us to keep everything basically functioning the way it's currently functioning. We just wanted to remind you that DLC, the second classroom, was added in the fall of 2023. You may recall in the spring of last year, this was a decision to bring this program back to Halifax in the school as opposed to having the majority of students at Kingston for services. And then we review the budget with regards to how it supports the strategy for district improvement. So in the past, the budget has been presented as three main parts of the regular day. Special education, which includes the tuition and the transportation. Now, in the past, all out-of-district Halifax residents, pre-K through 12, were included in your Halifax elementary budget. That's how it was done in the past. It's going to be changing for FY '25. It also, and the third component for the past budget was out-of-district vocational. So those were the three main parts of the budget as they appeared. You'll still have those three parts in the budget that you see in your packet that was prepared by Sarah with input from the entire team. But there are going to be a number of changes to the Halifax budget this year. So pre-K, as you know, will now be a Silver Lake expense. It's now officially recognized as a Silver Lake program. Silver Lake positions in the elementary schools will become school or town employees. So we have a number of elementary programs in Kingston, for example, but we also have some Silver Lake staff in Halifax. Silver Lake does not exist as an elementary entity. Those positions will need to become school or town employees, and we have a number of meetings set up with our unions to discuss what this might look like and how we can go about doing this moving forward. But we can't, there's no such thing as a Silver Lake elementary position.
How many people does that impact?
I think it's about three paraprofessionals in Halifax. Okay. Out-of-district special education tuitions for pre-K and secondary, they must be Silver Lake expenses. So the Town of Halifax will still be paying for these students, but it will be paying through the process of assessment through the Silver Lake budget. So this will appear as a decrease to the Halifax Elementary School. It will appear as an increase to the Silver Lake budget. Extended school year has typically been paid for out of revolving funds and grants. This will be part of the school budget. It's no longer being funded via a grant. What we are now gonna be using the grants for is to, the special education 240 grant will now be covering the out-of-district costs to help defray your out-of-district costs in Halifax, which is an allowable expense. In the past, it's been used primarily for staffing. There are some potential savings through this in the sense that we won't have to use grant funding to pay for retirement benefits kinds of, types of things. So you'll see that some of the costs for out-of-district will be offset. There'll be a decrease in the budget by anticipated grant revenues coming in. The special education revolving accounts will no longer be necessary in Halifax. Shared cost positions will now be paid according to the regional agreement percentages. So you'll see some fluctuation in the shared cost amount. And a plan for circuit breaker in FY '25 will need to be agreed upon with DESI. That's part of our next steps, but we just wanted to give you some ideas of the changes being brought about by this restructuring. Now that it has been approved and now that we have reviewed the way we've done things in the past with DESI versus how we'll be doing them in the future, these are the changes that you're gonna begin to see. So you're going to notice in the budget prepared by Sarah that there are increases to the Halifax budget. There are five paras and a part-time speech-language pathologist in the budget. In the past, that was funded through the grant. It's not going to be funded through the special education grant. It's going to be part of the Halifax budget, and you're gonna see that increase in the salary lines. The shared cost contracts, you're gonna see an increase of about 4%, a little over $12, almost $13,000 for the shared cost estimates. The extended school year costs are now going to be part of your budget, about $61,000 for program and tuitions and about $28,000 for transportation. You're gonna see a corresponding decrease in the Halifax budget, because we anticipate that we'll be able to decrease tuitions by $178,000 approximately using the 240 grant funding. It may increase depending the allocation for the 240 grant, which we haven't, we don't have those numbers yet. The other thing that we want you to be aware of is that Halifax will be assessed through Silver Lake for the pre-K and the secondary, middle school, high school, out-of-district costs. So those costs will be going back to the town, but through the assessment process. So the budget in your packet that you see tonight, circuit breaker was estimated at 70% or 750,000. The regular day budget reflects a 12.32% increase of about $783,000. The special education tuition and transportation for K through six only is a 63.01% decrease, because remember, in the past, it was covering more. So what your new line, it's only going to be K through six. It's not going to be the secondary or the pre-K. So that's why it appears to be such a sharp decrease. Substitutes are funded at FY '24 levels, and the utilities have been updated in this budget. The total budget represents a 10.3% decrease of about $955,000. So you'll notice in the school line items that there's been some resource reallocation to address priorities. Some areas have gone up a little, some areas have gone down. Some appear to be sized, percentage-wise, there appear to be a big increase, but then if you look at the dollar amount, it may not be all that much money. So in this presentation, Principal Bowdre will go over some of these fluctuations with you to try to anticipate some of your questions as to why certain areas might be going up or down. There are no known retirements at this time for FY '25. And the out-of-district vocational, we have five placements in the budget. One currently is in the program. We won't have this exact number until at least April 1st, because that's the deadline. So.
So you have a placeholder for five, but we only have one in the program. So we'll know for sure though in April?
Yes.
Okay.
Not included in this budget. The shared costs are estimates. They have not been updated to reflect potential contractual changes. In addition, we have additional staffing requests that Principal Bowdre will be presenting this evening. They are not included in this budget. So anything outside of level services, we've asked Principal Bowdre to keep separate for this committee to consider. Potential enrollment increases, as you know, kindergarten can be difficult to anticipate. So we have not accounted for a kindergarten enrollment increase. And we have not taken any reductions to technology hardware for REAP. So in the past, Halifax has been awarded a REAP grant, and it allows us to offset our technology hardware line by that amount. We don't know that amount yet, so that amount isn't reflected in this budget. So the next item is a traditional chart that Principal Bowdre presents from year to year to give you the projected enrollment and class sizes and this grade level staffing proposal. So I'm gonna turn it over now to Principal Bowdre.
Thank you. So this is just a comparison for '23, '24 compared to what we're projecting for next year. As you can see, we have a big class that's going out in sixth grade with 93, actually I think it's 92 now, and next year's group would be at 85. We put, we increased our kindergarten estimate to 85 typically for the four years that we've had. We've had low enrollment with grades two through five, but this year in kindergarten, as you can see, we had 90 students. So that was kind of a surprise getting that high number. So we're looking at that to be right around 85 for next year. It's a hard number to predict, but based upon getting 90 students this year, that's where we're guessing it will be. So our enrollment will be down a little bit, but it's looking around, it could be around 543. And the class average is 19 that we're looking at, which again is a little bit down from what it is this year.
Does that take consideration in DLC?
Yes, it does. Yes, they're calculated in that number. It's overall, because they're assigned a homeroom in the grade level and they're also in the DLC as well. Here, what we're looking at is just kind of, we highlighted just notable increases or decreases in certain areas in the budget. So in the first column there, you're looking at just classroom-related increases or decreases. The first one there is in the textbook line item, we had an increase of 17%, which is roughly $7,000. That increases, we're looking at purchasing a Sonde system, which is a reading intervention program we're looking at. Teaching supplies, we decreased it by 12%, and that's about $7,000. Again, the teaching supplies is kind of a catch-all. It's a big line item between $50,000 and $60,000. That's where we provide supplies for the classrooms. That's where we get our copy paper. It's kind of everything. So we're looking at if we can cut back a few things, it will reduce the impact that we're seeing the increase for textbooks. Then the next two are in special education for teaching supplies and testing materials. We've increased both of those areas, one by $1,875, and then the other one for testing materials is $2,800. Those are because we've, one, for the two additions for the last two years in a row, we've added staffing to our DLC programs, but also with the new guidelines in terms of special education. So we're looking at a whole new setup in terms of the IDP process, so we want to be sure that we get ahead of that, which is where you see those increases. The next column there is staff-related for tuition reimbursement. So we saw a huge increase in staff that ended up taking courses this year. Typically, it's like $15,000 to $17,000, but this year, it's already, I think we are, Sarah already mentioned, we're already $4,000 in the negative, so that's why we're looking to increase that one. Participating staff continue to take courses, that's what we're gonna look at for the key numbers there. The tech hardware, the next column, that is an increase of $87,000, 87% of $34,000, but typically what we do is we work with the technology director, Steve Pell, because our REAP grant is what offsets that particular line item. And our REAP grant comes in every year between $30,000 and $40,000, so that's typically where it would offset, but it's not a guarantee that comes in. We've been getting it, but we typically don't know where the funds are always at, so that's where we hope to see it offset. It's a more realistic view of what our actual tech line is like, because it looks like it's a little bit lower than you might see with other schools, but it's because we do get a substantial profit from the REAP grant. Then over here is facility-related, a couple of decreases here with custodial supplies, cut back just on general, like some of the things that we can get in terms of paper towels or toilet paper or things like that. Again, it fluctuates a little bit each year, but we saw that we were trending downward, so that we were able to cut back on that. And then just general building supplies, we cut back on that as well. That's sometimes with our custodians, when they'll do some work around the building. We've had a lot of work done, whether it's classroom painting or pots and ends that can be done throughout the building, but that's where you see those two decreases overall. So here, what, these are proposals that are beyond the level service that we're looking at, and there's four areas here. One, we're looking to have a special education teacher, and this proposal here is just looking for us to decrease the caseloads. Our caseloads have increased over the last several years, especially with the addition of our two DLC programs, and we're estimating the addition of a special ed teacher would be around $65,000 for that position. The next proposal is a part-time ESL teacher. Right now, we have an ESL teacher that comes to service our students on a weekly basis, but the amount of services that is recommended by DESI, we're not even close to meeting, and we really, I mean, right now, it's, we contract out to Kingston and it's, we're looking to have a person here in-house so we can have the appropriate services for our students that are here. Because what happens is students that receive ESL services, there's a recommended level of service delivery based upon their WITA scores. And so if there's a low, lower WITA score, they should have a specific amount of services each day, and we're not even meeting the minimum requirement there, which is why we're looking for a part-time 2.5 position.
Are we in trouble for not meeting that minimum requirement? Or is that something like, you know, like we have to provide certain services? Like, is that?
We do, we have an audit every three years, and we performed it the year before last, so we're halfway through. There was a finding last time that we did a review, not for Halifax specifically, but for one of our schools. DESI can't make you hire certain positions, but they will note that as a finding, and it did happen to one of the towns in our, in our region. So it's not something I don't think that we want from them.
No, I'm just wondering, like, you know, it seems like if we're supposed to be providing it, we should be providing it.
Yeah. And I'll say more about that in the future slides. We're not even halfway to what the students are recommended to get. It's close to 25%.
Even with a half a town percent?
No, as we currently, based on the needs that exist today and how we, the current staffing across the district.
We're meeting their needs at 25%?
In Halifax.
In Halifax. What are we paying? What are we paying right now for contracting? Just to know, like, the comparison of the costs?
That'll be in the, the slides coming up.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on an ESL teacher? All right, so the building sub is something that we look for each year. That's just having a building substitute. We're looking at the fill rates for the last three years, right around 50% really. And we don't have somebody to fill in those positions. Then we're looking for, struggling to just fill up the classroom, because we're looking at pairs that will help out. At least sometimes we have to cancel if it's a specialist, then prep times are lost. So having a building substitute is pretty important that we're hoping to have.
My question is too, like, so of the number of days you needed subs, you're able to get one 47% of the time?
Yes.
Okay. And there's, so that would add, because it says no additional cost, but because you'd be using the sub-line that we have for, okay.
So the sub-line right now is 67,000, thank you, Linda, $67,000 for the sub-line. So, I mean, that's kind of what we're looking at.
Kristi, does that substitute, does that line indicate any medical needs? So like last year, we were having some leads last year, would that be deducted?
It could be, that line could be impacted by that, yes. But then we also have a corresponding savings in one of those other lines, depending on type of rules they had.
And the last slide is our Hero Academy proposal. We're looking, Brian and I have been talking about this for a few years, about having an offering for our students over the summer months. We're looking for approximately 60 students in grades one through six. We find that we would be looking, we, there's an offering for ESY students and there's also an offering for Title I students. But we're looking at those cusp students that are like in a partially meeting, that don't technically receive services throughout the school year. There's typically a regression over the summer months, and that's what we were looking to target, those students in grades one through six. We would be using star benchmarking and MCAS testing to identify those students that would be appropriate for the program. We're looking at two weeks in the summertime that don't coincide with ESY or Title I. We're looking at, it could only be for like three hours per day, and we're looking at multi-age classrooms, so we can do like a one-two grouping, a three-four grouping, and then a five-six grouping. Estimating the cost for the program would be approximately between $10,000 and $15,000.
Would transportation be provided?
That's one that we would have to provide if, if it's a student that would require services, but not regular, like us, transportation, but be if a student requires that.
Depend on student needs, but it, this does not include a figure to transport all students who are eligible for the program. This is an estimate of what it would cost to include some students who require transportation because of their special needs.
Would this be in place of them going over to Kingston? Or would students on IEP still?
So right now, students that the.
Well, pre-K, that's pre-K, never mind, sorry.
That qualify for ESY, they have been going over to Plumpton, right? They've been going to Plumpton. And Title I, can't think the last time we had Title I here. We haven't, we haven't had anything here for a number of years. So we're looking at ESY that would come back.
Where do the Title I kids, the ones that qualify for Title I, where do they go?
So last year, we haven't had, had any of the programs here, because we've had so many renovations over the summer months. But last year, there was an accelerated academy that was funded through Title I. That was a week, I think, like Brian, the last two years, I think, I think was accelerated academy. And again, those are beyond the level service budget that we're proposing.
Would the building sub be a part-time employee or would they be a regular full-time employee? So even if you didn't have anybody out, I know it's very rare that nobody is out in the building. But if there was an occasion where there was nobody out in the building, is that building sub still showing up?
Yes.
Sure.
Yes.
Does that happen this year that we've not needed a sub?
That we haven't needed a sub?
Yeah, there was no.
It has happened on occasion.
Rare.
Very. I mean, it's just, I mean, it was building the size, I mean, it happens. But it, I mean, we've had days where, you know, that we haven't needed a sub.
Can I ask a question in terms of like, these are all worthy, but enough budget restricted time? What is your priority if we had to not hit all of those items?
Just one item or just?
Give your top, top.
Like, is it, is it listed the way you want it?
I think for the most part, these are in order. My, my only question is in regards to the ESL, it might, having an ESL teacher, because we are definitely below. It's just the number of students is, is a little different, but those two are almost like hand in hand. But again, we're definitely below the, the minimum requirement for the services provided to our ESL students.
So if we were to add all of these, or some of them, well, I mean, I guess because you're saying we're coming in less overall with everything, right? The total is 10% less. So I would assume.
Those expenses.
They just shifted.
They're going to shift to Silver Lake.
Okay.
Is it, is it a wash? And I'm sorry, like if this was covered and I didn't grasp it, but there's a lot of moving pieces between what's being added here and what's going to Silver Lake. So is, is it like a no-sub game that there is no difference? Or is the town going to be spending more money with those shifts?
So in our, in looking at the numbers, if we look back at, I think we looked at FY24, there appears to be savings for Halifax in general because of the benefit of the, some of the costs being assessed. I think is the best way to express it. Correct me if I'm wrong. So we do believe that Halifax this year will realize, I can't, I can't call it savings, but spending less money in certain areas.
Because the cost will be run through the assessment formula, so they'll be paying 30%.
So it overshared services, so it decreases Halifax' expenditures.
In total.
Yes.
But we haven't run, we don't have our state, our information here from the state, which comes with their week of January, so we can't even run the assessment formula without knowing that. And that will impact it also.
And the next one?
Just real quick, are there other towns within our school district that are also in the same position with an ESL teacher where we can share the cost of a full-time employee, which would be easier to advertise and fill than a half-time employee? Like for instance, if Plumpton also needs to get a half-time ESL teacher, just like we're doing with the band instructor?
I don't know that it would work out to be a full 1.0, but it is a way to attract more candidates if you have more FTE generally.
Yeah. But, so my question is, is there another towns in our district that also needs to fill this position?
There may be. That town hasn't had the opportunity to review their preliminary budget and needs yet, so.
I appreciate it. So as I'm doing the quick math, we're talking about another $140,000 to implement all of that, give or take $5,000.
For the sub-line, there's no additional cost, because we would just be using the sub-lines. We'd be paying for that building-based sub versus paying day-to-day subs.
Got it. Okay. So that's, that's us.
However, I, the estimated cost, for example, for a special education teacher, again, I don't.
More than 65.
It could be more than 65, because we just don't know what candidates we'll be able
Any other questions there? This slide is just basically some of the capital needs, accomplishments of FY24. We put water testing slash plumbing at the top of both 24 and 25, just because of the rent loan, we're not sure what that potential cost could be. But here, I think 24, the other things are, looking at just upgrading student staff bathrooms. It's an older building, we have to, they're used a lot, so we're just constantly looking to, you know, make sure that the, mainly the partitions need frequent replacement. Kindergarten playground and the mulch, that was approximately $50,000. That was PTO-funded for the majority of that mulch. Also, we purchased for this playground out back, and then we also were able to get some mulch that was donated to us from Plumpton when they had redone their playground to burn. So if you saw that giant amount of mulch out back, that's, that's where it all came from. And also, we're looking at the, it hasn't been completed yet, but in the kindergarten playground, there's a plan to connect the exit doorways, because there's just cement pads as soon as you walk out the door. So we want to connect them, so there's a clear path out to the side of the building by Holmes Library. And we're looking at extra refund that would have an initial plan, but that project is, is not going to. So for FY25, again, we're not 100% certain on the water testing, but we continue with student staff bathroom upgrades. And then the other piece to just kind of put on the radar, the gym bleacher replacement, that would need to be a warrant article. It's, it's, bleachers were put in in the 90s. We've been told that they could use somewhere. We, right now, we're just kind of making sure that they're functioning, but there might be a need to replace them entirely. And they would need to be compliant, because right now, they're, they're not compliant. Not even sure what's on the open end, it doesn't have a wall there. So that just might be something to put on radar, that it may need to be addressed eventually. But they are functioning, they are safe to get them inspected, but it might be closer to the time. Matt Durkey, when he was here, he, he had started that process of looking at, you know, considering that. We've moved in Mike Lawless to take a look at him as well, was the new director of the facility, so just wanted, it's not an immediate, but just to kind of put it out there. And here, this is kind of tying everything together here with our strategy for district improvement on the side here. Everything that we're looking for, special ed teacher, the part-time ESL, the building-based sub, the tech hardware, tuition reimbursement, the Hero Academy, all those pieces, we believe that are tied into all of our strategies for district improvement. It brings everything together from building relationships, having high expectations, having our curriculum that's engaged and aligned, and then improving overall structures and processes. So we leave all those things tied into that as well for the district, which is our.
These are just some quick background slides on the English learner justification. So for Halifax specifically, there are eight students here currently receiving English learner services. Sometimes we refer to students in this category as multilingual learners, because oftentimes they know more than one language. Currently, it's, EL services are provided by the Kingston ESL teacher, and then Halifax reimburses Kingston, and currently that cost is about, is around 20,000. So if you're, if you're doing the math, that can be subtract, you know, roughly subtracted from, but you, we know a 0.5 position is more expensive than, than 20,000, and that these recommendations come from the, from DESI. Kane, can you hear the next slide? Specifically, when students enroll, they take a home language survey, so just a refresher. And then every January and February that's happening right now, students take the access test, which sort of determines their, gives them a proficiency score in reading, writing, speaking, and listening. Based on that score, students are then recommended, they fall into one of two categories, which we'll see, you'll see on the next slide. And that determines how much formal ESL instruction that they get. At Halifax, that's delivered by, in small groups, based on the student's access score. And then when you score a 4.2, students are, are identified as former ELs or, or FELs, and then they're monitored after that. So here on the next slide, thank you, Mr. Bowdre, if your, if your WEDA level is, if you scored a 2.0 or below, you would have at the minimum end, two periods, not less than 45 minutes per day of direct English learner instruction. If you're 2.5 and higher, you would have one period per day. So based on those recommendations for the eight English learners here at Halifax, where, you know, around average, I'd say for about 25% of the lower end of the recommended minutes, I, I would say that these are hard to predict. Like oftentimes, we get to this point in the year and we say, well, did we know we were going to be where we are right now? Some of it depends on how students do, some of it depends on growth, some of it depends on our staffing and the structure, and also new students registering. So we want to be in a position where we can really meet students' needs. And right now, the model is very firm with how much the Kingston ESL teacher is able to provide. So we're looking for that stronger model to meet the needs of, of our students. So that's a little bit of an update on the background and the request for an ESL teacher.
What grade levels are the eight students in? Are they in a couple clusters or are they throughout all grade levels?
It's throughout.
Yeah, it's pretty, pretty mixed.
And is the Kingston teacher part-time at Kingston? That's incident. How does the Kingston teacher get here?
The Kingston teacher drives here.
Do I?
Yep.
But, like, is that, so is she considered full-time at Kingston?
He's, he comes over for, for like two slots a week, right? In the, two afternoons a week?
Yep.
And, but he's full-time over there, and then for the 80, just break it down, for the 80% of the time, he's over there, he's working with the, the Kingston students, and then Halifax reimburses Kingston for the time spent here. So the teacher is a 1.0, but the need here is for a point, a 0.5, we think.
So then he would have more access to his students at Kingston?
Correct, which also is experiencing more need.
So just a reminder that the budget in your packet this evening represents a level services budget, and the majority of this budget, 82% of the, of the regular day budget is payroll and staffing. So loss of staffing or inability to add requested positions does impact opportunities and support for our students. But we have not included the additional positions as presented by Kane. Those are not currently in the preliminary budget. So our next steps is for you to review the preliminary budget, review the capital plan priorities. As we stated earlier, we're. As we stated earlier, we're going to need more information with regards to the water. We hope to have that in a couple of weeks. And we're going to need to determine what that may or may not mean based upon the testing. We need to know what, in particular, the school committee wants the town to consider as a warrant article. If you want anything to move forward as a warrant article, that would need to come from this committee in order for us to move forward with that information and request an article from the town. And our next phase is working with community stakeholders, whether it be the finance committee, or any questions from the town that they might have with regards to the preliminary budget. Sometimes, the school committee waits until we have additional information in January before they ask us to make changes to the preliminary budget. But we've also had experiences where the committee has asked us to add things for the next school committee meeting. So again, that's entirely up to you, where you stand right now. If you know that there's something that you want to see in or out of this budget, or if you want to wait until January to see the additional information from the state. Our next, our next meeting-
February 5th.
-will be the budget hearing. So we'll open with an opportunity for members of the community to speak. But generally, we don't change the budget or do anything until we've received additional feedback from you.
Is it possible for us to meet after we have the results from the water testing before February meeting? So that when we get to the February meeting, we have better understanding?
We don't know for certain when we're going to get the results, so that's hard for me to, to say. Ideally, yes. But again, I, I don't know how long it will take to get those results. Generally, two weeks.
But you can share the info with the committee, so we have all the info.
Once we have the information-
So like, when we come here, we'll have the-
We can share with the committee.
So that we-
We just can't deliberate. I can, I can send it out, though.
But we can know.
Mm-hmm.
I would, well, if the building substitute is not going to make a difference to the budget, that's something I definitely feel is a priority to put in the budget.
My question is, we have a building sub. And let's say we also approve having the new special ed teacher, special education teacher. Will that bring up our paras more, so that they're not covering?
Absolutely. I mean, but having that person that would cover the process, because right now, it's, it's our paras that do most of the covering.
You said the special ed teachers are more of a co-teaching model, right? So even with a teacher absence, then the special ed teacher might be able, if it happens to be their co-teacher, then they can just seamlessly glue in, and there's another special ed teacher that will be able to play that role, right?
Yep.
So could we add certain things, bring it to the finance committee, see what they think? Like, because I know they asked for a level budget, but if we have reason that we feel in order to deliver the education, we need to. I don't know. I'm, you know, this is my first time at Chair, so.
I'm trying to remember in the past how we've tended to do it if we've, if we've presented the finance committee after the school committee has supported particular positions.
We tend to see finance committee in Halifax a little later.
Mm-hmm.
But they've usually given us some indication of, and I think what's information comes from the state at the end of the month, a little better sense of what that means to Halifax itself, as well as what that means to Silver Lake.
And when, again, do we think we'll have that information?
It's not released until the third week of January.
Okay. So we'll have that before February's meeting?
You'll know how the town of Halifax is doing, but Silver Lake's assessments wouldn't be presented until their February meeting. So it wouldn't be public knowledge yet.
When's their meeting, Dina? February, is it 11th? Let me see. It's the 11th.
Okay.
After ours.
After ours?
February 8th.
Um. So I just have a couple of questions around, which we still have to report this one.
I know.
So the town has asked us to do level service, correct?
That's the general direction.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the general direction.
Okay. So I'm first time on this side of things, but I've been around these meetings long enough to know that it's in our best interest to listen to the direction of the town and be respectful of their ask. I think we're in a difficult situation with asking for more than level service, even though I think there's a compelling need that's been made for all of those additional angles. So I, I am comfortable with substitute full-time sub, because I don't think that's going to impact things. I think the special ed teacher also will provide costs that could be discussed as being somewhat level service or level that maybe not negotiating here. My concern is, I think the other two needs in terms of programming, the Hero Academy would unfortunately fall to the bottom if that's not something we can do. And I think that ESL position is in truly what it's becoming a bigger need in our communities. So is there an opportunity to present two options? To say, this is our, like, you know, we need to finance to say, these are the items that we would like, these are the items that we feel we could work with out. But truly, there is a need for all of this.
In the past, when we've met with the finance committee, representatives from the school committee typically attend and speak to anything beyond level services that they would like to see included in the budget and explain the need. In addition, we tend to invite someone from Silver Lake School Committee as well because they also are dependent upon the town for support in that budget as well. So that is how it has worked in the past. And generally, it's a, it's a conversation about, here's, here's where we are. This is, we would like to advocate for these additional items. And here's why. The school committee can decide to go forward with or without the town, the finance committee's support. Obviously, we would much rather prefer to have the support of the finance committee, the Board of Selectmen, for example. But school committees in the past have sometimes included items in their budget that went, that went beyond the request of one or more boards. And sometimes, the boards have supported it nonetheless because they were convinced of the need based upon the presentations from members of the school committee in those meetings.
And so next month's meeting will be the public budget hearing, which will offer the community opportunity to ask questions and offer input. And is the expectation, just to refresh me, that we will then vote a budget, a draft budget in February to move to the town? Or do we have another month to talk through that?
The budget is traditionally voted in March.
Okay. That was really my concern.
It would have more, more complete information February to March to kind of help.
Yes. I don't feel like we're going to be able to sign something cohesive to the town.
This is very early in the process, but it's meant to give you a picture of proposed need, what it's going to cost, and, you know, what some of these additional changes, what impact they're going to have on your school budget.
Are, do we have to vote to recommend that we include certain things? Or like, to see how it would impact the budget?
If, so if you want a separate version of the budget, yes, you would vote, you know, what, what you'd like included. You may want to wait until we have these additional pieces of information because that might give you more information before you decide what you do or do not want to include in the version.
And we can include it in the February meeting, even if it's not in the budget?
Mm-hmm.
So we don't have to, like, formally?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Because really, what you're doing is you're going to be adding whatever, whatever you decide to include, you're adding that to your budget. And we've given you a general sense of the dollar amounts, but as you know, they're, they're only estimates. So you might want to, if, if in fact, that's something you want to move forward with, you want, may want a lot more than that, just to give yourself some wiggle room in the, in the hiring process.
So again, this is a refresh, it makes it sound a while since I've sat through a budget season. In next month's meeting, it's open to the public, and the public can ask questions. But my past recollection of meetings is that generally, there isn't a lot of attendance. And sometimes, it's not until things are further along in the budget process that people have questions. So is there anything that we should, as community representatives, share other than the importance of attending? Like, should we talk at a preliminary level about some of the needs that we've talked about? Is that an important thing to invite members to discuss? Is there an opportunity before we open the public budget hearing to share a slide even? Or give a quick overview of these points?
So tonight's presentation is being recorded.
Yep.
This information is also part of the, the school committee packet, which is also available online. So again, this is, this is the preliminary presentation for the public. And certainly, we encourage people to attend the budget hearing, especially if they would like to see certain items on the budget discussed, whether included or excluded from the budget. Either way, that's, that's the way that the community can express their concerns to the school committee before they find, they, they move towards a, a final budget that they will ultimately vote to approve.
I appreciate the overview. I think, you know, we had a special town meeting recently. The more information we can share with our community and their opportunity to ask questions before a budget is presented at town meetings by official. So thank you for that.
I have one last question. Do we have an estimate of how many students are in the ISD process right now? And I ask because if there's the potential of more students entering special education program, that gives me more of a reason to support adding an additional teacher.
So, Carter, Steve, thanks, Kate. It's a current name, there are seven teachers. And there are 130 students that are service by these teachers. Case load of 20, I think, is not considering that we're asking teachers to go teach. Our special education teachers facilitate their own team meetings. They also do the additional collaborations. Last year, we had to constantly give these students, the students that were valuing throughout the year, and all of those students, I think it was 18, were found out on shore. So we should look at the idea that our past will kind of predict what we can and what we can't in the future. So I would say at 2020. We also don't know how many kids are coming up from preschool and grade preschool. And that, the additional is about coming into K. So looking at it from that end, I think it's a reasonable request. I think it's our thing to do, especially with the idea that we may not have teacher years at the Silver Lake budget, you know, that could be denied. And then our teachers would have to carry a load of those very lengthy tests, but really productive things, tied into these on the field. And that would probably be a little more of a hardship for our school. Because we have to have that special case in time to have this work. But then, very highly given these terms, we have to do that through some of the times. And really, the special education teacher, the mom of the kids, we should give the best of both. Bye.
Thank you. I also wanted to hear a little bit more, so the Hero Academy proposal here, it's kind of vague. What, so you're targeting students, you said 60 students. I think that's a lot of students for $10,000 to $15,000. If we can actually help 60 students over the summer stay on course, I just don't know how are you targeting, like, you're targeting them through STAR and MCAS, but like, how? Like, just what would be the process of deciding what students would qualify for this?
So what we're, we're looking at, typically, when Brian and I do our data analysis on our own and with staff, we find that there's a group of students that are right below the meeting expectations on MCAS or STAR. And we find that those students are like, just like, one or two questions away. And those are students that typically don't receive any types of services whatsoever. And we feel like we could get the biggest bang for our buck when we target those particular individuals. I mean, we're targeting them throughout the school year. But even so, we want to do that as well. If we can, if we can target those students over the summer for a two-week crash course, then we do think that we will have the benefit of improving.
And who would be doing it? Would it be teachers?
Well, we're proposing, roughly, it would be, it would be three teachers. It would be a teacher for one, two, a teacher for three, four, and a teacher for five, six. And then we'd have a support staff member in each of those groups. So it would be a ratio of roughly 20 students to two staff members.
And then parents could opt to have their children do it if they wanted to. It's not like a mandatory thing. So then technically, transportation wouldn't be needed unless, right? Technically, or does it have to?
The transportation, we wouldn't provide transportation.
Right. So I almost kind of feel like, I mean, just for me thinking, I mean, if this is going to help 60 students and it's only going to cost us $10,000 to $15,000, why would we not try and push this one through too? Versus some of the other things we're proposing aren't as helping as many students, which, yes, it's going to help them over time. But I feel like this is actually kind of a, I don't know. I mean, I see a lot of, like, my son specifically declines in the summer. Not like I think that he'd qualify for this, but I think, like, I don't know. You're a teacher. I'm sure, like, when you see people come through, it's like, in the, the next year, they've forgotten half the stuff, and then they start over. I feel like this is actually kind of a cool crash course.
I think what you just brought up, too, is not just identifying kids on STAR. MCAS are up to score. We can pinpoint the regression on fall score compared to where they were in the spring. So that's an indicator for us, is how much are they doing during the summer? How much reading are they doing? How much math are they doing? So we can really pinpoint based off the progression that we've seen, especially in some of the older students. Like, the past couple of years coming into the fall, did they basically just take time to talk? Did they all have vacations, something like that? So that's what we really want to pinpoint, too. How can we get those students right in the fall to boost up a little bit?
Well, because there, I mean, there could be some students that want to do it, and their parents aren't there to help them, or vice versa, their parents want to help them, and the kids don't want to listen to the parents. I mean, I just had to hire a teacher for my son because he doesn't want to listen to me. So, and I have no patience. So like, I would, I would love it, but, I mean, is there? I think it's a great idea, to be honest. And for the, what we're thinking it's going to cost to help that many kids, I think is, is awesome. Versus hiring a couple more teachers in different spots, saying it's going to cost the town and the school a huge amount of money to help so many students. I don't disagree with any of them. I think all of these are necessary and needed. But I think for the budget, it's a small, it's a small ask to help 60 kids, roughly. Is there data to support that?
Have a chair.
Is, is there data to support that two weeks is enough to help with summer regression?
I think it's difficult to really put a length on it to, you know, to really get the buy-in from them, because the summer is the time for kids-
That's what I was going to say.
-having vacations, or whatever they do.
Like, August is out, yeah.
I do like to hop out.
No, I mean, it's, there's no, I just wonder, because I know, like, when my kids have done summer things, they've been longer, but I know, like, by August, usually, they're like, all right, August, everyone's, you know, for, I mean, if I'm remembering correctly, but.
I mean, if I'm remembering correctly, but.
I remember one of my children participating in a summer program. I believe it was K through 3, K through 2. And then it wasn't mom, or he wasn't eligible. But it was, I think it was three times a week for three to four weeks. And it might have been something through Title I. But it was, you know, he was making progress and needed a little extra help in the reading. And it helped. He gave it every minute of it. But, you know, we managed to carpool with friends and make it happen. I think it's worthy effort. I just think it's that everything and everything that was presented is worthy. And I think, yeah, I don't know. I wish we had all the money involved.
When we look at, so as the budget stands right now with level services and the reallocation of the shared funds, how everything is going to go, this will really. Right now, we have money in our pot, so to speak, based comparing this school year to next school year. When we add these things in, where does that go?
Like, what percentage of increase, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, I wonder that, too.
Are we awash at that point based on this year?
When we did our preliminary estimates, it was, we were using actual FY $23 versus 24 assessments. So we were kind of mixing. But it was the best information that we had. And that, those numbers would not wipe out that difference. What we're projecting, that might be a savings for Halifax.
So it's still about savings?
Yes. Based on that information.
But we'll have firmer information by next month.
As we can get the state information, more information from the town, we'll have.
So we'll really know what.
Better, more concrete information to work with.
So just a quick question in terms of, like, payroll. So any wage increases are factored in to the budget?
Any other questions, or?
I just have a request that if you're going through budget documents and you notice something and you have a question, if you could shoot me an email in advance, that way, I'm not going to be shuffling through paperwork and files. I don't have the institutional knowledge that Christine has yet. So any questions in advance that I could prepare fully for you, I would appreciate.
I guess, well, so my question would be, for the next time, once you have the final numbers, I guess, to know what adding these four extra things would be? Like, just, you know, I mean, you know, and the percentage increase and what it would look like for what we would present to the town? I guess that would be, is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Dr. Prue, do we have an idea offhand whether or not Silver Lake is going to be also adding things to their budget? Because you said that they also will have a decrease. But will they be possibly in the same position as us where they want to add things to their budget? Do we know that in advance?
I believe that there's an increased need for EL support at the secondary level. And I believe that the school committee has also discussed the possibility of requesting a full-time school resource officer at the middle school. But again, we haven't had our preliminary budget discussion. So I'm not sure what else could be discussed.
I'm just trying to be cognizant of the town in general, not just our Halifax elementary budget.
Okay. Any other questions? So before we go into executive session, dates to remember are January 15th, it's Martin Luther King Junior Day. And then our next meeting is February 5th, 2024. If someone wants to make a motion to go into executive session, not to return to open session, that would be great. Just have to read that.
I'll make a motion to go to executive session, MGL C30A Section 21A3 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for contract negotiations and executive session pursuant to MGL C30AS 21A7 to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law approval of executive session minutes of 11/13/23 and not return to regular session.
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Katie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Betska?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.